I'd like to call this meeting the Westland City Council of Order. Begin to pledge allegiance led by Councilman Delano Hornbuckle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice. So I'm just checking, if you guys didn't hear, I know I did, this little young lady with the pink bow tie was louder than everybody. All right? You take notes. Good job sweetheart, thank you. What's her name?
Ms. Clerk, Rollcall.
Councilman Godbout is absent, excused. Councilman Hersberg absent, excused. Councilman Hornbuckle.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Pro Tem Rukowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampson.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We begin with special presentations and announcements. First, I want to go ahead and make everyone aware, this past Thursday, one of our employees, been here a long time for the WLND community, Dave Monick, passed away. He'd been an employee of the city for over 30 years. So it's with a heavy heart that we share the passing of Dave Monick. Dave worked with the city of Westland in Community Media Department for over 30 years. There's no doubt you've seen him at many city events over the years. Through all the major city milestones, Dave was there with a camera in hand. He captured great images and footage all over town, including the summer festival, Blues Brews and BBQ, concerts in the park, and thousands of others, studio and remote productions. Dave continued to work for the city even through his illness, and he was behind the scenes, but he worked very diligently, and we have an awful lot to thank. And I want to remember Dave right now by, if I would ask all of you to join us in a moment of silence for Dave. Thank you. Thank you for years of service. We appreciate you. Rest well. We'll move now to our Compassionate City Initiative. I'll invite up Laura Fritz and Deanna Statchow.
Mayor Landau, City Council, good evening. And my name is Deanna Statchow, and I'm the chairperson of the Compassionate Westland City Committee. We are here this evening to honor three compassionate students. But before we start our presentation, let me introduce the rest of our committee. I have Laura Fritz, and she's our vice chair, Donna Young, our recording secretary, and Shannon Ziegler, our finance. Laura, I will turn the microphone over to you, and thank you to the caring and compassionate students that are here this evening, and parents, grandparents, top job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deanna, and thanks, everyone. Thanks for having us. We're just a group of Westland residents who focus on the positive goings-on in our community, in particular acts of compassion. As Vic Bear likes to say, we have three victims this evening, three Wayne Westland students who have been caught committing great acts of compassion, and we are here to honor them tonight. Not only are they role models to their peers, but to all of us here in this room, their acts of kindness remind us what being a good neighbor and a good person is all about. And with that, I would like to invite Amanda Dibis of Wayne Westland Schools for the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. This evening, I'm going to invite up three students. We have students from all three of our middle schools here this evening. So our first student is Emily Delane, and Emily is from Franklin Middle School. Emily, I'm going to invite you and your principal, Ms. Pringle, up this evening. So Emily's random act of kindness is that Emily comes to the gym during her lunch hour every day and plays with students from our SXI classroom. Emily also has handmade each one of our students from the SXI classroom a beautiful backpack with their name on it. And just so everyone knows, our SXI students are students who receive special education services for severe multiple impairments. So thank you so much, Emily. We really appreciate your random act of kindness. So our next student we're going to ask up is from Adams Middle School, and that is Monique Oliver. So Monique, come on up, and we're going to ask your teacher, Amy Krupsky, to come up And Monique's random act of kindness is Monique was nominated by Mrs. Simone Argu and our peer-to-peer students at Adams Middle School. Monique is being recognized for her compassion, kindness, and leadership while working with our students. The students in our peer-to-peer program adore her. And our peer-to-peer program is where students are paired with differently-abled students to encourage understanding and friendship. So thank you so much for your random act of kindness. And our third student this evening is from Stevenson Middle School. We have Naomi Duggar with her principal, or assistant principal, Annie Phillips, and teacher Kim Mandrell. If you guys would come on up here. Naomi is a model student and will go out of her way to help other students. She eats breakfast with students that no one else will eat with. Her kindness and respect for others is amazing, and we can hope others will follow in her lead. And Naomi is also a student in our students who need a power class at Stevenson Middle School. So thank you so much for your kindness. At this time, I believe members of our Westland City Council are going to come down and present to you all the certificates.
I decided I got Monique because I went to Adams too. About five years ago, first.
Thirty years ago.
Check it out.
Right there's great. We'll have everyone squish together. Okay? And on three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Okay, students will now go out into the outer area here for additional pictures.
So like Deanna said, if you're part of the group and you want your photos, we'll go right out there to lobby, we'll make you Facebook famous, get you on the website. All right, as they filter out, I believe we have State Representative Kevin Coleman here to give us an update.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate you giving me a couple minutes tonight. Again, congratulations to the students that were just up here, really great work. Emily was actually one of my former music students going way back, and it's just really nice to see how she's grown up to be such a nice young lady. So that was really a nice surprise, and it's very uplifting to, and I'm glad that you guys reward the students and do that. It's really cool. I wanted to come up tonight and talk about kind of somewhat of a downer subject here, which is the power failures that have been going on in our community and how hard they've hit our community. Westland was hit, I think, probably worse than a lot of the communities that surround us. And as the state representative for the 25th district, which includes the majority of Westland, it's very important to me that we take a stand, and I'm giving you my commitment tonight that I'm going to take a very strong stand in Lansing to make sure that we push our provider, DTE, to upgrade the grid, to make it more reliable, more consistent, and to have a better emergency plan than what they have now. Obviously, they could not handle the extent to the outages of the last couple weeks. It had a very negative effect on a lot of our neighbors. I myself, I live at Wayne Road and Marquette over in that neighborhood. We were out for three days. There are people who are still out and just getting their power on tonight. I've been watching Facebook, and I've seen some of the neighborhoods just right around here are just getting their power on today. So this is really unacceptable in 2023 that our grid would be at that vulnerable. And I just want to let you know that I am going to be setting up a meeting with Michigan Public Service Commission. I'll be talking to them. I do sit on the Energy Committee up in Lansing. We are going to be having hearings, and we're going to be having DTE come in and talk to us as well. So I'm going to report back to the city and let you know how this goes. Obviously, this is something we're hearing a lot about in the media. But I do want to thank the linemen who spent the last couple weeks out there working in the really harsh conditions. I want to thank, and I'll turn this way now since they're over here, but I want to thank our firefighters, our EMT people, and our police department. I know it took a really hard toll on you guys, and I saw you out all the last couple weeks. I do want to thank the administration for going out and checking on the seniors. I know that they were doing that. Our office has been checking in on some as well, calling them and checking in. And I want to thank the Warren Evans administration over at Wayne County, because I know they were out going door-to-door as well. So I do appreciate that. As your representative, please use our office as a resource. If we can ever offer any assistance, answer questions, or if you just want to give us some input, we're always here to talk. Our phone number in Lansing is 517-373-2275. My cell phone number, and you can always give me a call, I always do this, 734-751-6321. And our email address, kevincoleman@house.mi.gov. And then the last thing I'm going to do tonight is I'm just going to mention someone new that's working in my office, and she's really at the front lines of dealing with constituents, and that is Faith, and she's sitting right here. Hi, Faith.
Hi.
Faith is somebody that if you call our office, she's probably going to be the first person that's going to return your call, and then we go from there. So I do appreciate Faith. She's doing a great, she's been with us about two, three weeks now.
A month now.
Oh, a month now? Okay, a month now. It's going by fast. She's doing a great job so far, so again, please use this as a resource, and thanks for giving me a couple minutes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rep. All right, we'll now move to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from the council. Is there anyone on my right? Yep, Ms. Baumann?
Good evening, Council President and Westland City Council, Emily Baumann, resident of Westland and precinct delegate in Precinct 4. The questions I have are on two of the items on the consent calendar. The first one is item G. It indicates a reallocation of the $4 million of the ARPA monies, and I understand that it's related to the Marshall School project that's not happening. So it's coming from that allocation, but in the resolution, unless I'm missing something, it did not indicate where the monies are being allocated to. So I know there was a lot of discussion last meeting of not putting monies into the general fund, so in anticipation of the study session that I know you're going to have, my question is where does this go in the meantime? And then on item H, there is a request for $175,000 for the installation of a fitness court. When I read the supporting documents, the requested amount is $125,000 due to $50,000 in a grant, but the actual proposal from the National Fitness Campaign indicates that the balance after the grant is $105,000. So I'm trying to understand what the 175 is related to. There's $20,000, and why it's there for that. The math doesn't make sense to me. So those are my questions. Thanks.
Is there anyone on my left? Coming back to the right. On the agenda?
On the agenda.
Yep.
Good things on the agenda. So number L, I'm very, very glad, I want to thank Melissa for Sanders. Councilwoman, I want to say thank you. I've been putting a lot of hard work into this, and I did recommend that about a year ago. I think it started 2007, I believe, when I started it. Went to the mayor, Cicirelli, at the time, and we came up with this disability concern. Then it changed, then our group has changed it now, which we changed the name to the Disability Act to See community. And I am really happy with it. We are going places. We're not just sitting here at the office. We are on the road. I'm in the community. I am wearing a name tag now, and I am so proud what I do. And people have seen me in the community and they say, Ray, I see you on television. I see you in the community. You're doing a great job of helping others. And what I do is I give hope to people and resources, whatever I can do. If I don't have the answer, I'll call Westland. There's people we can call. I can call Melissa, for example. But hopefully, you all will support this for me. I want to say thank you. Also, one more thing, M for autism awareness. I think that's the biggest thing, too. And, you know, that's important, too, to be in the proclamation, whatever we call it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Input on the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
I must have missed something along the way, because on G, it's $4 million. Is this the same $4 million we discussed last meeting that 2.5 is to go with the fire department?
I'll answer it, and when we get the motion and support from the council, we're going to address that.
Oh, okay, because I was kind of confused about this saying $4 million is walking around. Piece of money, send it to my house.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience? Input on the agenda? All right, I will close. Input on the agenda, move to the council. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
So far.
I have a motion from Council, Pro Tem Rukowski, supported from Councilwoman Sampson. Questions on the consent calendar, first item G for the $4 million. That is re-appropriating the $4 million that we did appropriate to Marshall back to our available ARPA funds. Before I close the book on that, Steve Smith, will you concur?
I will concur, that is exactly right.
Right. So we're just, we're taking that $4 million that we initially applied to Marshall, moving it back to the available ARPA balance for us for future allocations. So that's what that is. That's just the paperwork that follows us doing so. As far as item H, correct? H for $175,000, there's some matching funds and some grants. I'm going to let Parks Director Kyle Mulligan address that.
Yep, through the chair. The total project cost is estimated at $175. I did see, noticed the $125. That is for the fitness court itself. Their additional fee, additional costs are for the concrete slab that'll need to be under there, as well as the installation. And then the grant matches $50,000, so the 175 is just coming out of the expenditures account. And then we'll get the revenues back through the grant and then additional sponsors.
All right. All right, to the council, are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to the consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of the minutes of a regular meeting held February 21, 2023. Approval of bid for DPS and Fire Administration Networking Infrastructure Reconfiguration Services. Administration recommended SSD cabling and cameras at a total cost not to exceed $34,321.56 and authorized the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney. Approval of bid for mulch supply and installation services. Administration recommended the low bidder, Midstates Recreation LLC, total cost not to exceed $68,880.25. Approval of inter-local government agreement with Wayne County to utilize Parks Village funding from fiscal year 2022-23 in the amount of $59,421 for improvements at Curtis Woods Park. Adoption of budget amendments through December 31, 2022, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023. This item had been introduced February 21, 2023. Introduction of Ordinance 243-B, an ordinance to amend the Westland City Code of Ordinances, Article 2 of Chapter 26, by adding Division 3 entitled Bicycle Operations and Safety. Adoption of prepared resolution to authorize the reallocation of $4 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds. Adoption of prepared resolution to allocate $175,000 for an outdoor fitness court at Approval of requests from Dance Academy of Westland to waive the administrative city hall rental fee for the use of the Lions Pavilion at $275 to host their annual Wigs for Kids event on Sunday, August 13, 2023, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Approval of requests from Wayne Westland Relay for Life to waive the administrative city hall rental fee for the use of the farmer's market, $560, and pavilions 1 through 6 at $175 each to host a Relay for Life event Saturday, June 10, 2023, 11:00 a.m. to 11:59 p.m. Approval of Planning Commission 2023 Annual Report. Approval of the Disabilities Awareness Month proclamation to proclaim the month of March 2023 Disabilities Awareness Month in the city of Westland. Last item approved on the consent calendar, adoption of a prepared proclamation to proclaim the month of April 2023 Autism Awareness Month in the city of Westland. Moving to payment of vouchers.
Support.
Have a motion by Councilwoman McDermott, supported by Councilwoman Sampson. Are there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no motion carries.
New business. Item 1, confirmation of appointment of Jennifer Thompson to the Planning Commission for a three-year term with the term to expire March 6, 2026.
Motion by Pro Tem Rukowski, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Mayor?
Thank you, President Hart. We're asking for an appointment to a three-year term for Ms. Thompson, who's in the audience tonight. She's a longtime Westland resident. Her resume is attached to the packet, and it's very, very thorough. She's worked in the healthcare business for a lot of years, for Corvall Health currently, Beaumont Health, and also Botford Hospital. She's got education, Masters in Science of Nursing at Madonna University, Bachelor in Science of Nursing at Eastern Michigan University, and a Associate Degree in Nursing at Henry Ford Community College. So we're asking for her appointment tonight, and we appreciate the support.
Thank you. Any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries. Ms. Thompson, where are you? Stand up and be recognized.
New business. Item 2, confirmation of reappointment of Bridget Juward to the Economic Development Corporation Tax Increment Finance Authority, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a six-year term with the term ending March 19, 2029.
Support.
Motion by Councilwoman Sampson, supported by Councilman McDermott. Mayor?
I'll thank you tonight. Ms. Juward is not here tonight, as she's at home sick, but she was, she's served on the Tifa Board for a number of years and done a great job for us. I just met her recently at the most recent Tifa Board, and another healthcare professional that we were asking for a reappointment on.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries.
New business. Item 3, approval of preliminary plan for medical office, parcel 051-990055701, Val Properties LLC. This is planning department number 2056M. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there a motion?
Move.
Motion by Councilwoman McDermott. Is there support? Supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Mo?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. The subject site here, it's on your screen, outlined in yellow. It's on the north side of Cherry Hill, between Superior Parkway, right here, and the Canton Township Line, approximately right here. This property abuts the ITC Transmission Corridor on the north side, and north of that, there's the Brookfield Village PUD development that exists. It's a condominium development that was approved several years ago. The site currently comprises of an undeveloped 1.14 acres. It was also part of the Brookfield Village development. It was supposed to contain a commercial development. The last approved use was a gas station that never was constructed. Today, the petitioner proposes a modification to the previously approved PUD plan in order to develop an approximately 6,400 square foot medical building. The exact medical use has not been yet, has not yet been determined, but it will be a medical office-type use. The master plan designates this site as community commercial. The master plan designates this site as community commercial. This is a layout of what the site plan looks like. You can see the envelope of the building here. There's a landscape plan in your backup, but I'll just go through some quick information as it relates to the site plan. Site access is proposed off of that Superior Parkway Drive. Here's the curb cut over here. This is Cherry Hill over here. The site will contain 32 off-street parking spaces, which exactly meets the requirement. This is a one-story building. It's constructed with brick materials and a hip-style roof, which helps it integrate with the residential character of the surrounding area. The site plan does indicate, well, your landscaping plan that's in your backup does indicate extensive landscaping throughout the site in compliance with the zoning ordinance. There's a 25-foot setback buffer along the front property line. The developer is installing a sidewalk along the Cherry Hill side and also the Superior Parkway frontage as well. And that will include an ornamental-style fencing that you see on Ford Road that's incorporated into this plan as well. That's what the site looks like from a street view. It abuts a tree lumberyard that is located in Canton Township. The Planning Commission reviewed this at its March, I'm sorry, yeah, it's March 1 meeting and is recommending approval. The landowner, and I believe architect maybe, are in the audience. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the petitioner have anything to offer? Where is the petitioner? There you go.
My name is Gasali Abnu. I'm the architect of the project and...
John Decock, owner of the property. How are you? Good, good.
We just would like to thank you for having us here tonight, and we hope to get approved and we can answer any questions you have.
Well, very good. Let's see if the gallery's got anything, anything from the maker today. Councilwoman McDermott?
Good evening. Thank you for being here. Just, and thank you for your investment in this community. We really appreciate that. Do you guys have a tentative groundbreaking date that you want to start the construction? I know the weather right now is crazy, so probably not when there's ice storms and snowstorms.
So what we're going to go through, we're going to start doing the construction documents and hopefully submit it within a month. And hopefully we get the permit and start working on it.
And at the same time, we're going to market the property and hopefully try to get a pre-tenant or tenant before construction.
Wonderful. I want to thank you guys for your investment in this community. It means a lot to us. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anything from the supporter?
Nothing here. Just thank you for being, come to the city. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Sampe?
Oh, thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Is this going to be a private practice or is this affiliated with the health system? Maybe can you tell us a little bit more about the business and...
Right now, it's just a, it's proposed as a medical and professional office. So we're entertaining physicians, maybe urgent care or even professional, you know, attorney or even like an insurance agency, if you will. But mostly targeting the medical. So that's what we're looking for as far as private practice. Most likely, maybe dentistry, orthodontist and whatnot. Something that's not, you know, if they're going to occupy the whole entire 6,400 square feet or maybe it could just be, consist of maybe a couple of tenants. But we're constructing hopefully up to six units at about an average of about 1,000 per unit. But it all depends on how it attracts.
Okay, sounds good. Is this your first investment in our city? Or do you have other?
In Westland, yes.
Awesome. Well, thank you for choosing Westland. We appreciate it. And I'll be, I'll be in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion from the council? Pro Tem?
Thank you. Good evening. Really excited to always see new investment in our city. And I know that Parcel has laid vacant for quite some time and those, the previous plans fell through. I just wanted to thank you for being very considerate to the style of homes that are there and making the architecture of that business be in harmony with that subdivision. I think that's important. We look forward to, you know, you breaking ground and it becoming occupied and hopefully bringing some additional services to our residents.
Sure, sure, yeah. Hopefully it can service the community.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries. Good luck, gentlemen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. God bless you. Thank you.
New business. Item 4. Approval of final plan for medical office, same parcel, same LLC, planning department number 2056N.
Motion by Pro Tem. Supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any other discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries.
New business. Item 5. Approval of site plan, excuse me, for proposed mosque addition. 37775 Palmer Road, south side of Palmer, between John Hicks and Newburgh. This is planning department number 0421B. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Motion by Councilwoman McDermott. Supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Mo?
Thanks, Council President. I would like to add, just for the previous case for the audience, I know the council knows, but there's a, there's a PUD ordinance, a planning unit development ordinance that is a flexible-type zoning, and that's what that medical office was. And in the PUD ordinance, you are required to go through preliminary site plan approval and then final site plan approval, and that's why it showed up twice on the agenda. So just in case anyone is wondering. For this case, this property is approximately 3 and 1/2 acres in area. Again, outlined in yellow on your screen. It's currently zoned R2, single-family residential, and is developed with an existing mosque. Religious institutions and schools, including parks, too, in this city, and it's not unusual in other cities, to be zoned, single-family residential. The mosque is about 8,500 square feet currently. The building was originally built to accommodate Prince of Peace Lutheran Church. The petitioner is requesting site plan approval today for a 3,000-square-foot addition for a prayer room. There's also another small addition on the, what is that, east side to accommodate a vestibule area. That's approximately 300 square feet. The master plan, future land use map, designates this property as semi-public, so this use fits with that. Some of the characteristics of the site plan, it's, again, just this 3,000-square-foot addition here at the south side of the property, south end of the building. Existing site access will be maintained here. There's no modifications there. Parking is still in compliance. Obviously, there's a greater need for parking because of the addition, but they're still in compliance with that. 83 off-street parking spaces are provided, 75 are required. Lot coverage, setbacks, building height, all the things we look for in compliance with zoning are still met. The proposed addition will be constructed primarily using brick. I don't have that in here, but it's in your backup, brick material to match the existing building. Here's a floor plan. Can't really quite see it that well, but it's there. Similar with the previous proposal, the Planning Commission did review this at its March 1 meeting and is recommending approval. The petitioner and applicant are here today. They'd be happy to answer any questions, and so would I. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you guys want to come up and offer any other input or I'm sure answer some questions if there are any?
I'm about to Dicky from, and I'm designing, I'm the civil design work for this project.
My name is Mohammed Noman. I'm the treasurer of the mosque.
Oh, very good. Do we have any questions from the maker? Anything from the supporter? All right. Do we have any discussion from the council? Pro Tem?
Thank you, Council President. Am I on? Okay. Through the chair to the planning director. Can you expound on what the contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations are for this item? Thank you.
That is a, quite honestly, like a blanket statement that we put in all of the site plans. It should be in all of the site plans. When applicants are going through the construction phase, when they create way more detailed construction documents, there's oftentimes some engineering, some fire stuff that get triggered that are not maybe well detailed in those preliminary site plans. So we just want to make sure we have that flexibility when there's stormwater going on behind the scenes after the fact. So that's basically what it's about.
Thank you, Director. And thank you for explaining that. We do see it quite often, and I don't think there's ever been a solid explanation of what that is. And then, other than those, there was no concern from the Planning Commission, no other recommendations for the site?
There was, there was no conditions or concerns from the Planning Commission that were raised. I don't believe there was anyone from the public here in opposition as well for this specific case.
Well, wonderful. Thank you so much.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
New business. Item 6. Approval of site plan and special land use for proposed drive-through restaurant 2646 South Wayne Road, northwest corner of Wayne and Glenwood. KL and WL investment. This is planning department number 168 Board B. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Is there a motion? Motion by Pro Tem, supported by Councilwoman Sampe. Mo?
Thanks, Council President. The property here is approximately 1.4 acres, again, outlined on your screen in yellow. It's Zone CB4. That's our vehicle service district. The site currently contains an existing Marathon gas station on the south side. The petitioner is requesting site plan and special land use approval to build a drive-through restaurant on the vacant northern portion of the site, outlined in red. The specific restaurant has not yet been identified. The master plan designates this site as neighborhood commercial slash office services. This is a more detailed aerial of the site on the north side. It's been undeveloped for quite a while. Maybe the landowner can dig into that a bit. So some information related to the site plan. The site plan on the northern side where the, where the drive-through is located will utilize a one-way traffic pattern. The two curb cuts that exist at the site today, one on Glenwood, one at Wayne, will be maintained. There's no modifications being proposed to those. The proposed drive-through is located along Wayne Road with sufficient capacity to handle drive-through traffic. Drive-through restaurants require a traffic impact study by a certified traffic engineer. One was conducted in your backup, and the study presented no concerns or recommendations to adjust the final plan being presented to you. The proposal provides the required amount of stacking spaces for the drive-through operation. And also, the entire site does comply with the parking requirement. There is an escape lane here being provided. We don't require that in our ordinance currently today. It's a best practice. It is being provided. That kind of helps the fire department out. The ordering menu board will be located around this area, adjacent to the building on the north side. So it's sort of hidden, well, mostly hidden from Wayne Road, especially considering this landscaping buffer over here. The proposed development, because of the nature of it, does trigger some substantial landscaping requirements for the site, which are all being complied with. There is a requirement by the Planning Commission to install a three-foot decorative knee wall over here to screen the adjacent church slash school. The owner has, has, is okay with doing that. The building, finally, will be constructed using brick materials. This is a rendering up on your screen. The Planning Commission did review this at its February 1 meeting and is recommending approval to you. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and we have the landowner and the architect here today, too. Thank you.
All right, very good. You guys want to come back, come on up? You're the next contestant? You have any opening statement?
Yes, my name is Alan Hall. I'm the architect with API. This is the owner. And we're here for any questions that you have.
Very good. Well, I think they're lining up, so I'll start with Pro Tem Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, gentlemen. I've been looking forward to seeing this drive-through. So I have a couple of questions. One, do you anticipate it being occupied quickly? Have you shopped tenants yet?
Well, we are actually getting some bites on the property already, and we haven't even marketed it yet. I just put it out there with some friends, and we've already got a couple of people that are interested in it so far.
Well, that's fantastic. We've been up here, not you specifically, but we've had a few different requests for drive-throughs, and they've seemingly never come to fruition. So I certainly hope that yours does. That you see the project all the way through, but it's a beautiful rendering, and whoever occupies it are going to be very fortunate.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Sampe, did you have something?
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Thank you, Council President. My question actually is to Mo, through the chair to Mo. Is this going to be an exit on Wayne Road or Glenwood?
Well, so the drive-through restaurant patrons can use Wayne Road or Glenwood. It will probably be more practical for them because of the way the site is laid out to use the Wayne curb cut.
Okay. That's, I was, I was thinking that, but I just wanted clarification. And then also, too, gentlemen, I know that you guys have worked hard on it. The building's beautiful, so congratulations to you both. But are you planning to have this as a sit-down restaurant, too, or just drive-through only?
Well, right now, we don't know, but it is designed for some small seating with a drive-through now. If we do, you mentioned we just had a call on a property that the building might be a little smaller. But if that goes that way, we'll have to redesign the site.
Okay, great. Yeah, I love seeing the development, too, in the south end of Westland. So hopefully something exciting comes, and it sounds like you guys are planning to act very quickly on it, which we appreciate. So thank you very much.
I got one thing real quick, and I'll bring it over to you. To the property owner, do you own the gas station as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, so that's why you're allowing egress in and out of the gas station?
Yes, sir.
I thought it was like, I hope he owns that. Volunteering the property. All right, so if you ever did want to split it off, you'd have to, somebody would have to get an access agreement with you for whatever reason. All right, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Councilwoman McDermott. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening. Thank you for your investment in the community. The rendering looks wonderful. It looks like a really beautiful building. Just a couple of questions for you. Will there be an enclosed dumpster? Because this abuts to a residential neighborhood right behind it, so I think if there was an enclosed dumpster... Okay, that is...
There is, yes.
Great, wonderful. And then, do you have a certain type of clientele or demographic that you're going after in terms of the type of restaurant that you're hoping to attract there? Or just any buyer that's willing to come you're looking to take?
We're looking for a national brand, QSR. We don't want just any mom-and-pop there. We don't want to make the investment and have them closed down. We want a corporate guarantee, so we're looking for the big players out there.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you guys for your investment in the community. Really appreciate it. Thank you, Councilman.
I have one more question, and I'm going to see if the council does first. Any other discussion from the council? I'm going to use up my second speaking point, so I'm going to make it worth it. All right, excited about this. I just have a question, Mo. In the, I don't think likely, but I'll still ask, situation where this future tenant becomes a well-known establishment that's opening up here in the southeast Michigan area with large parking and traffic issues. Are we going to have some kind of control measures in place just in case something like that should happen?
So I, there's a lot of dilemmas that I deal with as a planning person, and I can tell you for a fact that that, that business would not be interested in this site because of their requirements for square...
Well, I get it, but we never know if there was to be some new hot greatness that causes some parking issues, so... We, just, if there is, just say, if it's a traffic issue, maybe it's a question for the police chief. I mean, I hope you guys have that problem in some kind of way where it doesn't block my traffic, though, but...
We, I do, I, I'm going to be a little conceited here, but I try and do a good job laying out with the architect and working out with the site plan. That's why we designed the car wash the way we did, that they have to drive in, circulate, and things like that. So I feel that there's enough sacking here outside of what's already in place on your screen that it won't cause any traffic, traffic impacts. Can I guarantee that? No, but I feel like we've substantially mitigated the concern.
Well, if you're happy, I am happy, Mo. I just wanted to ask the question... Well, if you're happy, I am happy, Mo. I just wanted to ask the question because I'm sure if I didn't ask that question, there would have been a lot more afterwards on my Facebook page, so I figured we kind of addressed it here. So, is there any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
Don't block Wayne Road.
Thank you very much.
All right, we move to public comment. Everyone speaking for the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is a speaker's option to ask questions at this time and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not stop, will not stop once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaking time is exhausted, whichever comes first. Is there anyone on my right? Yes.
Good evening, oh, good evening, everyone. Paul Anaki, Westland, precinct delegate, precinct five. At the last council meeting, during council comments, council members Sam B., McDermott, Ann Rukowski made, talked about gun control. I completely agree with, that what happened to MSU was a tragedy. It was awful and it was sad. That being said, some important facts were also left out. First of all, with the current laws we already have, if they had been enforced, the MSU shooter should never have been able to purchase any gun. In 2019, he was charged with carrying a concealed weapon, which is a felony and that alone would have prevented him from purchasing or owning a gun legally. The Inglewood County prosecutor gave him a plea deal where he pled guilty to a misdemeanor charge of possession of a loaded firearm in or upon a vehicle, where he was sentenced to a year and a half probation. According to Dana Nessel, his probationary period was even extended a couple of times. So even when there was a law to prevent this man from owning a gun legally, the prosecutor pled the charge down. We already have many protective gun laws in the books to prevent criminals from having guns that must be enforced first. The new bills being discussed would create laws, not for criminals, but for law-abiding citizens exercising their constitutional right to bear arms as it is protected in our constitution. Back in 1994, my cousin was shot in the face with a shotgun by his friend. I remember that day, watching the news and seeing my cousin being taken out in a body bag. And I have never blamed the gun for it. The responsible party was his friend that pulled the trigger. I want to just encourage all of you that when you use a tragedy to call for common sense gun reform, at least give all the facts that are known at the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my left? Chief? Please remember to state your name, your address.
Good evening. Daryl Stamper, Fire Chief. I just want to take a moment, I won't take a lot of time, to thank both the mayor and the council for passing the amendment to the budget, which allocated the funding for the firefighters that we had on a mix of federal grant and city-paid salary. That's important to me as Fire Chief. It's important to the fire department. It's important to, most importantly, the firefighters who work day in, day out to provide level of service for the community, its residents, and those visiting. So, again, I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate the support. Have a great night and a wonderful week upcoming. Thanks.
Thank you. On my right? Mr. Barra?
Thank you, Council President, Mayor, Council. It's dog vaccination month here in the city of Westland and I'm wearing my Civic League president hat right now. And I just want to remind everybody, if you go on the City of Westland's Facebook page, you can get all the information that you need. It's set, scheduled for Saturday, March 25th, I believe, from 10:00 AM to 2:00. And I'm proud to say the Wayne Forest Civic League is going to sponsor all of the vaccination costs and dog registration costs for our community's veterans again this year. So, get the word out. We have a slot for 250 dogs to come to our event. But I can tell you, we sneak a few in extra every year because Michigan Maine Society always brings a little bit of extra vaccine. So, get your puppies ready. It's time to make them well. Veterans, get your dogs in there. It's free on the house. We're going to take care of you again. Thank you.
All right, on my left, sir?
I think I'm in the second on dogs. Hi, so Derek Davis. I live here in Westland. I'm actually talking on behalf of Hometown Pets and myself. We recently partnered together to do a dog adoption event with the Detroit Area Animal Control. They had given us nine dogs that we needed to find homes for and I just wanted to let you all know, we found homes for all nine. We managed to get a massive amount of donations, more than the shelter had seen from anybody our tiny little size. The City of Westland, Council, President Pro Tem, everyone, you were wonderful, WLND, coming out and making that small spot, sharing the things on the Chamber of Commerce website. Those were things that we wouldn't have been able to do on our own. It was just the two of us that had this really great idea to find homes for all these dogs and we really didn't expect this much support. So I thought you wanted to know some piece of good news, you know, amongst all of that, that, you know, we, you were part of the reason that we found homes for every single one of those dogs. So, on behalf of Hometown Pets and myself, I just wanted to say thanks. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That deserves a round.
There you go. I'm going to go to my right. Ms. Hartman? Lyda? You can take your time. I'll wait. Don't worry.
Good evening. Thank you, Council and Mayor Londo. Lyda Hartman from Westland, many, many years. I'm here tonight because we're getting all kinds of grants and money and trying to spend it all at once, which you don't have to. You can take your time and spend it on what's needed, not what you want in a hurry, because haste makes waste. We are talking about paths of cement for walkers and paths of cement for bike riders or whatever little thing that you can get for these little kids. This summer, I seen them on little wheels that can be driven by some apparatus to go as fast or as slow as you want. I think it's dangerous and do we have insurance in the company, in the city to take care of an accident that might happen? And if so, our taxes are going to go up because we have to have maintenance of these paths and walks that you're trying. How many miles of the walks and trails are we going to have? You got to think about all the things that are going to cost us, the taxpayers. It's nice to get the grant and my opinion is, this is foolish spending when you're putting in paths and little trails for little ones to ride their bikes or whatever, because some of them are learning to ride their bike. And if they have it motorized, which I've seen this past summer, I think it's going to be a popular thing. Little four-year-olds riding on something that you can't keep up with on your own two feet as grandpa or mama, you know? So, I want to think, people, to use their head in spending the money that you're getting in grants. It's not you have to have it to borrow. You take your time. Think about what's valuable, what's needed. And maybe a few years down the road, if you've saved some money, you might have to be taking care of some of the bills instead of us, the taxpayer, paying for something we don't need. That's my thought. I only have three minutes, so I made it in a hurry. And I hope you take this seriously because spending money is easy, but paying the bill is not. And we, the taxpayers, are paying the bill. So, think about what you're doing and I thank you for your time. Thank you. Take care. I'm glad to be back too. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone on my left? Sir?
Good evening. I'm Arthur Warren, president of the Southeast Westland Homeowners Association. And I come to you tonight to just give you a brief history of Stottlemyre Park. Stottlemyre Park was a park which was not created by the city in 1966. Basically, it was created by Matt Mayfield and 12 residents from the Carver subdivision, Annapolis Park, to create that park. The first request to that council at that time was for $25,000 to build a tennis court and a basketball court, which was flatly rejected by council at that particular time. And all council would give the citizens was $7,500 of vouchers. And so Matt started off and he built the park. That's why the park is important to us. But to get to the point is that recently, we had a sign placed there to commemorate the work that those 12 individuals have done. That sign has been vandalized. And so I'm approaching the city and with the request that we could find some way to reduce the amount of vandalism on that sign because that sign depict, depicts the history of that community and it is very important to us, for the folks who are coming behind us to know why that park is there and why that park is important to the Southeast Homeowners Association. So for your Philly's directors, your park directors, you can get on with the homeowners association. Maybe something can be done to reface that sign because it hasn't even been out there six months. All the other signs with your names and some of your names on there are all in place, but the ones that the Afro-Americans have built has been defaced. I don't know who did it and I don't know why they did it, but it's been done. And the request from the Southeast Homeowners Association is that we can find some way to reduce the amount of vandalism on that sign. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody on my right? Ray?
I'm going to save the best for the last.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, so, I mean, I got a little bit of stuff here to talk about tonight, DTE. I was a little concerned. Because I know over the last, from Friday to Saturday and Sunday and even City of Wayne, Westland, I've been keeping up on the news on this stuff too. So, I'm glad Kevin brought that up tonight. That's very important because I'm concerned. People even with disabilities because I'm glad Westland and police and the fire, I want to thank them too for their hard work and, you know, because something happens to that person, there's liability. So, they better start thinking about their loved ones too in, in the case of power. Because I lost my power for two days and it's not, it doesn't feel good if you don't have power. You can't light up your phones, you can't do anything or charge them up. So I came here and did it. So, charged myself up and did some work. So anyway, I talked about that. Well, let's talk about the Disability Awareness Month. And I want to say, thank you, City Council, for, for approving that and supporting that for me today. And autism, because autism is in April. So we kind of do, so it's kind of nice. We even have social worker in the month of March too, so there's a lot of stuff going on, even with my work, social worker month. So, I'll have to tell them when I see them. So anyway, as awareness, as I'm going out in the community and doing a lot, you know, and WLND. I wanted to say, Melissa, thank you for your interview. I'm definitely looking forward to it. So is my friends. I'm getting the word out soon as I know when it's up and running. So, we even have Patrick, I believe, diversity was on there too. Diversity covers a lot of different things. I've gone a couple, his, a couple to diversity. It does cover with autistic, it covers with disabilities, it covers with everybody. Diversity follows everybody. So, I also wanted to say something too. You know, people live a self-determined life. People live in group homes. So there is different places for different things. Well, I'm going to say one thing about me. I do not live in a group home. I live a self-directed life because that's what I do. I educate people. And it's important because sometimes people don't understand that until they ask you. But I drive a car, I work, and I am proud to be me, out there helping other people and stuff. So, that's, that's what I wanted to cover. Also, I'm going to keep doing what I'm doing out there, bringing hope, helping others. And sometimes even with step, I get my skills built up there too. Sometimes, you know, we all have to educate people. That's the bottom line. I'm going to say, thank you.
Thank you.
My right.
All right, anybody on my left? Yes. Yep.
Dan's trying to block me with his head. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and our chiefs. I'm Ruth Dale, Westland. I have a little history. Doesn't that sound like me? Our sub was built in 1956, 10 years before we became the City of Westland. Our sub, a cul-de-sac, is located between the trail and Heinz Parkway off Middle Belt. We're the only houses between the trail and Warren Road. At first, traffic was not so bad getting in and out onto Middle Belt. Then a beautiful shopping mall was built in 1966 and traffic began to increase. At morning, evening work time, holidays, bad weather, our sub many times is blocked. The left turn lane was shortened a few years ago, which eliminated us easing out and heading southward onto Middle Belt. And of course now, there is a huge, major problem to go right or left onto Middle Belt, as you know, due to closure and construction on Merriman Road. It's actually dangerous, except for the short window hours between like mid-morning, mid-afternoon, and then later evening. At the last coffee hour, State Rep. Kevin Coleman listened to my plea. Two days later, a sign, yellow, went up about 10 feet from the sub. It says, "Do not block intersection." That has been the first attempt to any, to do anything about traffic situation for our subdivision. Thank you, Kevin. Ooh, just left here. Many feel the sign that was put up, however, and that was after February 14th, after the coffee hour, they feel that it's more dangerous. Only sometimes the curb lane stops, but the other northbound and then of course the two southbound, they continue traveling 45 miles an hour. Some of us feel our city and Wayne County has forgotten our area. And I, oh, 19, I can do it. I wanted to thank Kevin Coleman again and I wanted to thank two courteous workers at the water department, Ricky and Randy. I wanted to thank Mayor and Steve Smith for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yep.
Good afternoon. You guys know who I am. Sent you guys an email and I appealed my decision for my FOIA. This guy right here, the Chief of Staff, sat there and did you guys' job. How? I'm going to tell you guys how. When I appeal a FOIA request by law, When I appeal a FOIA request by law, you guys, the City Council, has to make me a meeting. Who is this guy to sit there and deny my request for my FOIA? I asked in detail for the citizens over here that when their car gets told, "Stop, don't interrupt me."
No, sir.
Don't interrupt me.
No.
Don't interrupt me.
Sir.
Don't interrupt me.
Sir.
Do not interrupt me. I'm telling you, don't interrupt me.
Recede.
This is my three minutes.
Recede. Back to order. 8:14, 14, sir?
So, good afternoon. Like I said, the contract has to go out for bid. And it's been seven years since the contract has expired. Okay? You guys did not show and put in there how much was the original bid, how much price was on there, how much you clean up for the, what's it called? There has to be lists of everything. Insurance for the place that has the what's it called? Nothing was available. I asked everything in detail. Now, I could submit another FOIA and ask for the bids for the last 20 years. See what you guys have to say about that. It's illegal what you guys are doing. You guys are not putting these contracts out for bid. Somebody's getting money for it. I don't know if the mayor is going, he's a new mayor, probably, who knows? But I'm trying to explain to everybody that I'm a public activist. I go to Macomb, Oakton, Wayne, and everywhere because I was a target of a tow company that charged me $800 to tow out my car. And I got the contract. Their contract was there since 1987 and never went out for bid. You are not allowed to have a contract more than seven years without putting it for bid. So it's up to you guys. I'm asking for, what I asked for, appeal. Appeal decision has to be made by council. I go in front of council, I present my evidence. And this is what I say. I present the contracts I have from other people. And I tell you, this is what's going on. This is what I asked. So the Chief of Staff, who is he to sit there and sign a piece of paper? An email I got, he signed it or denied. Who are you to deny? It has to go into a public meeting, closed meeting, okay? And then you guys will be the judges, and you guys will make the decision. If you guys deny the decision, I will appeal it in circuit court. That's how the process goes. The attorney can tell you that. Who's the attorney here? City Attorney? Can you please speak? If I'm right or wrong here?
Well, time is, your time is up. So it just expired. Fosone?
I wanna, I wanna see if you can speak. My time is up. I'm gonna listen.
Okay, just let me run this meeting because that's what my job is. Mr. Fosone, do you want to address that during your comments?
I'll address it during my comments.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone on my left? Yes.
Hi, my name is Sherri Sago. I don't like speaking in public, but I'm here because of my neighborhood. I live by her. I live off of Lear Court. And to leave our intersection is dangerous. My daughter goes to school in the morning, and I have to pick her up at 3:00. Nobody stops. Nobody obeys the sign. Nobody cares. When you try to turn left, I've almost gotten into two head-on collisions. I'm not the only neighbor because they come out to turn on the turn lane before it even starts. They can't see that you're there. It is dangerous. I don't know what can be done, but I do know that we have to wait till the fall. There's going to be serious accidents. I cannot handle it. Our neighbors, it's dangerous. And we all have kids. It's scary. So I'm just hoping that something can be done to fix this because all the way till fall, it's very dangerous. If you guys haven't been out there to see it, come between 3:00 and 5:00. Come in the morning, you will see. Nobody stops. Nobody cares. Nobody is obeying the signs. And it's just dangerous. So I'm just hoping you guys can help us. And like I said, I don't speak in public, so that's how serious this is. Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Chief? Mayor? Chief Staff, can you have someone talk to these individuals here and get some more information? Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, is there anyone on my right? Sir?
Hello, Josh Powell, Precinct Delegate in Westland as well. I was here speaking before about the proposed, or having you guys take a look at Water Tower, possibly. And I know that Council President said you wanted some more details, so I was able to look those up for you. Farmington Hills built the largest water tower in Michigan, the 3 million gallon water tower. They took out a seven-year loan for it, but they repaid that in five years with their savings. Now, their total water tower, their total water bill for a month is down $3.5 million from what it was in 2014. And everyone there pays 10% less in water bills since, from what their rates were in 2014. Some other communities that have done the same thing are Orion Township, Novi, Waterford, and Ferndale, all in the last 20 years. And it's pretty much what you said. You just filled out the water tower at night and cycled out the water in the morning. But it was a $5 million investment, and it saves them $3.5 million a year in Farmington Hills.
Thank you. Is anybody on my left? Anybody else in the audience?
Hello again. Emily Vowman, Westland resident and precinct delegate of four. First, I'm gonna, just for the math part, it would be nice to have clear math on some of those things because the math didn't add up. So on the request for that 125, 175, it would have been nice to have seen the breakdown. I heard the answer. But on the actual paperwork, when we're putting, we're putting it out, it actually would have been nice to see the clear math on that. I was a little confused on some of the approvals before tenants come into buildings. So I just, I want to share, that just really confused me. So I don't know if there's anything that can be said because before you have a tenant, you know, a building could sit vacant for a long time. And I don't know what's better, having a vacant building that looks nice or open field. And then I know, I don't know if I'll get this question, but I realized there was a question about motorized bicycles with the bicycle ordinance, motorized bicycles on sidewalks. I've seen that happen. So I don't know what, how that fits into that ordinance. The other thing I also wanted to mention that, I actually wanted to thank Councilman Gaobert for the motion last meeting. I didn't come, but I saw it, saw it, about moving, postponing the art book allocation until after the still yet to be scheduled study session. It was actually discouraging to see the attempt to pass that through on a consent calendar when I sat in an audit session that actually everyone agreed to having a study session before they did it. So that was a little discouraging, including moving the $5 million. They're all gonna put that off till later. Regardless of how it's being separately tracked, I'm looking forward to that study session. The other thing is, and in general, I know the residents of Westland are asking for more public study sessions where we can participate and see some of these transparent discussions. I thought, I actually thought the discussion last time was really great. And I think that people do need to see that. They need to see those open, anytime there's an open opportunity to see the discussion and see the conversation going on, I think is really valuable to the people so that they know what's going on so it's not feeling like everything's behind closed doors. So I thought that was actually really good. The other thing that I'm gonna talk about, actually, I'm going to kind of go along with the intersections. I live near Wayne and Hunter. And recently, we have witnessed, we have actually witnessed many accidents at that intersection. And then we've heard about them, that we've catched, you know, where that's closed. And recently, there was a fatality. We do need some of our intersections be looked at as far as whether, is it too fast on Wayne? Is, do we need a turning signal? Do we, what do we need? Because it's just, you know, the drivers need, obviously, we need the drivers following the law, which is what we're having issues with that. But we also need some opportunities because it's gotten busier and busier, and it is really hard to turn left off of Wayne onto Hunter, either direction. It's really difficult. I've done it. I've had to do it. And you're, you're like, okay, yellow, 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 go. And I don't want to do that because I don't want to put anyone at risk. And so I just, I do think we need to do some study sessions of some, or traffic studies of those areas so we can do that. And so that's my end.
And your time's up? Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience? Input on the, or not input on the agenda, public comment, I, sorry. Anybody else in the audience? All right, close public comment and move the comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, President Hart. You guys are gonna hate me because I was already gonna be long-winded, and I added about five more things. So I want to start by, I hear all the groans. I want to start, I'm glad Mo Aiyub stuck around. Yesterday was Mo's four-year anniversary with the City of Westland. And he did a great job. He had a lot of things on the agenda tonight. He thoroughly explains everything, vets everything very carefully and does a great job. I just want to take a minute to recognize Mo publicly. Thank you. Mr. Warren, I'll have our staff take a look at that sign at Stottlemyre Park. Chief's here as well. He's in the, he's outside talking to residents, but we'll make sure to beef up patrols over there as well, see what we can do to get that situation taken care of. The folks from the Bedelt subdivision. We would also take a look, I have been by that way because I have to take Middle Belt because Merriman's closed, so it does back up over there. So we'll see about working with Police Chief and also Wayne County and beef up patrols in that area as well to help out with that. Wayne and Hunter, I'm glad you mentioned that. Before I was even on council, I stated that was a dangerous intersection. And unfortunately, soon as I became mayor, we had a fatality there. So Police Chief has already done the work. We've had, I'm gonna, don't quote, man, it's about 108 accidents at that intersection since 2018, around 30 injury accidents and one fatality. So we're working with Wayne County right now to do a left turn lane there. We're working with them, and we gotta work with our engineering department. It's a lengthy process. Unfortunately, it's a county road. But we're working with them to get that taken care of. As you know, pedestrian safety is a big thing for me. So I also want to thank the Council President and for doing a moment of silence for Dave, Dave Monick. I want to offer my deepest condolences to the family and friends who, Dave Monaco recently passed away. We all know Dave. He was a dedicated employee for over 30 years. Council President did a great job memorizing him, memorializing him. But we're working with the family to honor him in a special way. And while we're grieving and miss our friend, we're comforted in knowing that he's free of cancer. But I know the staff at WLND is like a family to him. So they've been pretty broken up for the last few days. So if you guys get a chance to reach out to everyone at WLND, I'd appreciate it. All right, so this part is gonna suck for me. So the Westland Police Department faced off against the Garden City Police Department last weekend in a charity hockey game to benefit Michigan State Police Detective Sergeant Mark Kachar. Over $6,500 was raised. Did get a nice letter from the family recognizing us and the police department and the City of Garden City for putting on that event. So I appreciate them reaching out. But I lost the bet with the Garden City Mayor, so I have to wear the Garden City Mayor's jersey for my comments tonight. So bear with me while I change. We got a recess again? And it's from Mark Jacobs as well, the mayor of Garden City. So he had a council meeting tonight, unfortunately, so he wasn't able to make it. But he was sure to come by about 5:00 today and present it to me in my office. So you might, you might see a picture or two show up on Facebook. All right, Chief, you see this? It's pretty disappointing, but. All right.
Good colors, though.
So we lost 11 to 7, and I'm a man of my words. So it was just a friendly wager, and I also owe him lunch as well. So I also want to take an opportunity to thank, congratulate Jennifer Thompson on her appointment to the Planning Commission for a three-year term. I'd also like to congratulate Bridget Juward for her reappointment to the Economic Development Corporation Tax Increment Finance Authority and Brown Field Redevelopment Authority for a six-year term. Looking forward to working with both of you. Congratulations to Emily Delane, Monique Oliver, and Naomi Dugger and being recognized from your teachers and peers for going above and beyond for others. You may have noticed tonight, we had made some seating changes at the council meeting. We have the finance team and my Chief of Staff on the dais now as well. That way, some certain questions can be answered in a timely fashion. Let's see here. Due to the recent storm and powder outages, our team went out over the weekend to do wellness checks with representatives from Wayne County, including Wayne County Executive Warren Evans, Deputy CEO Assad Turfi, the Wayne County Sheriff's Office, our Westland Police and Fire and Rescue, and the Department of Public Service employees, along with myself and my Chief of Staff. We were able to go door-to-door and do wellness checks on each end of town. We were able to cover a lot of ground, ensuring our residents were safe. We started on the south end and made our way back to the north end and hit about three neighborhoods and covered a really lot of, a lot of ground. Back to the Department of Public Service. Employees did a great job. They deserve a great shout-out for their tireless work and long hours, making sure to remove branches that were left over from the storm from residents' homes. Beginning Friday at 4:00 PM, crews began plowing and salting major roads and bus routes and continued until 7:00 AM Saturday morning. At that time, all DPS personnel were called in and dispatched. We had 18 pieces of snow equipment out clearing neighborhoods and local roads. Two tree crews are out cleaning down limbs and clearing roadways along with two city contractors. We had one crew delivering stop signs for streetlight outages and placing barricades where they may be needed. Also, we had all of our supervisors on hand for support. I went out on Saturday and walked in, and Director Ramsey Elgree was sitting in the office. And I think he might have knew I was coming by. I kind of was joking with him. But no, he's, he's always there. Our team does a great job, and he was there front and center. I also want to take a moment to recognize Councilwoman Sampe for stopping by on Friday and dropping off some pizzas right before the storm for our DPS employees. They were very, very appreciative. Got to officiate my first wedding last week for David and Sharon Rakita. I wished them many years of happiness. That was, that was a pretty cool moment for me. I've done weddings in my time as an emcee and all that, but I never got to actually ordain a wedding. So it was pretty neat. Had the honor of attending and pending a pending ceremony for Mr. Mark Alexander Spence, who is a Westland veteran, and gave him a proclamation for his service to the U.S. Army. This amending, pending ceremony was made possible by the heartfelt work of Sharon Ann Floyd, Reverend Sabrina Wright, Jennifer Smith, Mary Bieber, Sarah Dietz, the American Legion Pulse 32, Accent Care Hospice, the family of Mark Alexander Spence, and then our veterans liaison Vic Barra was there as well. Vic had some great words to say to this, to this veteran. In 2020, the City of Westland Parks and Recreation Department and Wildwood Elementary partnered up to begin a bench for caps program provided by Green Tree Plastics LLC. The goal of this program is to educate children in the school district about the importance of recycling and to show that recycling in a proper way can lead to positive results in the community. After over two years, I'm looking at Councilwoman Rakowski, two years of collecting plastic caps, COVID hindrances, and coordinating with Green Tree Plastics, the children were able to collect over 1,000 pounds of plastic caps to be turned in. After the caps were delivered to Green Tree Plastics in Indiana, Green Tree Plastics was able to turn those recycled caps into eight brand-new benches made from recycled plastic that were brought back to the city. These benches will be placed near neighborhoods and parks throughout Westland with a small plaque on each detailing the story of where it came from. I would like to thank Council President Protem Andrew Rakowski, our Parks Director Kyle Mulligan, and the Principal of Wildwood Elementary Chris Swanson for bringing this project to the city and the school district and providing a great value to our community. We'll be doing a more formal ceremony on Earth Day, so look for more on that. This one's good. The once iconic Lee Wright's Building, located at 626 South Wayne Road, is almost completely demolished after many years of not being in use and being vacant. The broken window theory argues that one broken window leads to many more. We are taking a more aggressive approach to tackling commercial blight, knowing that these improvements will increase investment and generate revenue in the surrounding area. Couple more things, Council, and I'll be all set. Very excited that City Council approved our request for funding for a brand-new, state-of-the-art fire station on the former Hawthorne Valley site. I was also able to meet with Wayne Westland School District Superintendent Dr. John Dingnan, Wayne Westland Board President David Cox, members of my team, including Facilities Director Vic Barra, Chief of Staff Mike Reddy, and Congresswoman Talib about partnering with the Wayne Westland Community Schools to build a regional fire training center on the Hawthorne site. You'll be seeing a lot more information on this in the near future. We're really, really excited about this regional endeavor. I'm also in the process of working with Congresswoman Talib on convening a informational town hall right here at City Hall next week where we will invite members of DTE, state and county officials, and of course, the residents so they can voice their concerns. We'll be sure to push this information out on all of our platforms, including our city's website and any social media outlets we have once the details are finalized. Without question, the recent ice storm followed up by heavy snowfall we experienced in our region was devastating for so many people and very frustrating for all concerned. With many residents without power in our city, my office has been in contact with regional DTE representatives, regional DTE representatives, ensuring that they were prioritizing restoration efforts. Once again, Vic Barra stepping up to the plate helping us out. First and foremost, we had to make sure that they were aware of our outages that are police, fire, and emergency shelter locations, followed by our most vulnerable populations to include but not limited to senior living complexes, medical facilities, and also rehabilitation centers. With many homebound seniors and residents with disabilities, many requests were made for emergency generator services, which DTE was able to assist with in most of those situations. Just want to talk a little bit about how DTE prioritizes their regional outages. Their primary focus areas with the greatest number of outages, meaning locations and residents first, with the goal of getting disrupted power restored to as many people as possible. This is not our decision, this is how DTE prioritizes their regional outages. I know the explanation might not make our residents feel better about being without power for such a very long time, and they deserve an explanation as how the process works, though. Want you to know I'm echoing the residents' concerns, and as I said, we're doing a town hall here at City Hall next Monday. I don't have the time and location yet, it will be in the ballroom, I know that, but I don't have the exact time yet, but I think one of the council members might be able to mention it. And I think that's all I got tonight, council president.
Thank you, mayor. Move over to the city attorney.
Thank you. First, Mr. Smith and I want to thank the chiefs for giving us these chairs, they're really comfortable guys, so we appreciate it, it looks a lot different from this angle, so. Let me turn to the question raised as to the FOIA appeal. The request was for the impound towing contract and the city's snow removal contract, and on February 14th, the FOIA coordinator submitted to the applicant the request or the city of Westland's towing contract as well as the lone or single snow removal contract. The next day, a written appeal was submitted asking for the schedule of charges, the term of the contract, and asserted that the city of Westland had not proven a valid reason for withholding the information sought, and asked, please accept my formal appeal to the city of Wayne. We took that to mean the city of Westland, but it said city of Wayne. In any event, the way it works here in the city of Westland, when your FOIA request comes in, it goes to the FOIA coordinator. The FOIA coordinator works with the department heads to get the documents related to the request, and the FOIA coordinator sends that out. The policy then provides if you want to, you disagree, you can appeal, and that appeals through the mayor's office, not a special meeting of the city council. And Mr. Ayan is absolutely right, he has a right to appeal to the circuit court, and so if he doesn't like the city's decision, he can go to the circuit court on this. However, I'd point out that on appeal, the questions asked were slightly different than the questions in the initial request, and being such a well-known public activist in this area, he's well-aware that FOIA is only about existing documents. FOIA is an obligation of the city to provide existing documents, not to create new documents and not to...
Sir, you cannot interrupt him.
Not to create new documents, and it's not a question-and-answer period, so you don't get to ask a question and get a narrative response. You get a document, you ask for a document, you get a document. So again, the towing contract was provided, as was the snow removal contract. The questions on appeal, which were slightly different, asked for a better understanding of the term of the contract, because this is a contract, in particular, the towing contract, has been with a long-term vendor and has been extended numerous times. And the fees associated with that contract have been weaved into the master fee agreement that council adopts annually, so you'll see those sort of fees in your master fee agreement. There was no request for the master fee agreement, that's online anyway. And so the appeal or the response by the chief of staff on behalf of the mayor's office tried to outline this and tried to also point the, Mr. Ayan, the public activist, to some other information that might have been helpful, but again, it's, I think there's often a misunderstanding of what FOIA is about, and people want their questions answered, but FOIA is about documents produced. So, council, that would be trying to explain what I understand occurred in this instance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Turner?
There is none.
All right. Sir? Sir, you can ask him when the meeting's over, quit interrupting. We'll begin council comments this evening with Councilwoman McDermott.
Good evening, and thank you, council president. Want to start out by congratulating all the students for their compassionate acts. I want to congratulate Emily Delane, Monique Oliver, and Naomi Dugger. Thank you for all you do in making our city a shining example of what a great future we have here in our city and all the compassionate acts that you've done. Thank you, council president, for leading us in a moment of silence for Dave. I know the WLND team is really hurting with his loss. You know, we know that he's at peace and no longer battling cancer, as the mayor said, but if you ever went out to a city event here, anytime in the last really 30 years, you saw somebody taking pictures, you saw somebody greeting the residents, and you saw the photos that you see on Facebook, those were from Dave. And he really did a great job at so many community events, and he will be sorely missed, so my thoughts, my prayers, my condolences go out to not only his family and closest friends, but his WLND and his professional family here in the city of Westland, because you know he's really an invaluable asset here in the community. I want to thank the administration, the mayor, the mayor's team, I know Ramsey's not here tonight, but Ramsey Elgari and our entire DPW crew for a really great response to not only, if the ice storm wasn't bad enough, Mother Nature dumped a heavy blanket of wet snow on us that caused more issues and outages and damage to trees, limbs, and branches, so thank you guys for a prompt response out there. Thank you to the DPW crew who is really working round the clock, 24/7, to get the neighborhoods picked up. Thank you to our first responders, our police and fire who were out there. I've got some comments about that in a little later here, but thank you to our first responders for going out there and kinda playing babysitter for DTE on some of these down power lines and issues. It was really terrible for a couple of days there, and between our DPW crew, our police and fire, they were really working round the clock, and so we can't begin to appreciate how hard they were working for our city here, and thank you, mayor, and thank you to the administration for all your hard work, and to Ramsey and the entire DPW crew, thank you so much. Speaking of our first responders, a reminder that the firefighters are gonna have their charity ball coming up on May 6th this year. It is back, it is returning this year, so if you want to get your tickets, you can buy them, I think they're on sale here to the general public today as well, so you can get your tickets to the charity ball, and contact the fire department to get those tickets as well, and I believe they have a link about that on their Facebook page as well that you can find to get more information about the annual charity ball. This one is a little extra special this year, too, it is the 10th year anniversary of the passing of firefighter Wookiee here, so on this 10th anniversary, they're gonna do something, you know, a little extra special and nice to honor his memory, so I'd hope to see you there, and you can support by making a donation, even if you can't attend the event in May, make a donation in support of the firefighters' charity ball. I want to thank Ray for bringing up Disabilities Awareness Month and for his work with Councilwoman Sampe, I know it's gonna be coming out on WLND for their taping to highlight and spotlight disabilities, and also for the resolution, I believe brought up by Councilwoman Sampe initially, for making April Autism Awareness Month. I think it's crucially important, I think almost everybody knows somebody whose family or has a friend that's been impacted by a disability of one form or another, so if we want to make do on our compassionate city initiative, honoring Disabilities Awareness Month and Autism Awareness Month is crucially important. Again, thank you to the mayor on the Lee Wright's demolition, I know that we're going through building by building, block by block, trying to tackle that, and it's really nice to see that come down, I know a lot of residents are happy. Thank you to Jennifer Thompson, and thank you to Bridget Juward for your appointments and reappointment on our commissions tonight. Again, boards and commissions are really the backbone of what we have here in the city and really help make us function and operate. The last thing that I wanted to talk about here tonight is our friends at Detroit Edison, our everybody's favorite utility company here. I want to start out first off by thanking all the men and women, all of our utility workers and men and women who climb the poles and work on the power lines. We know that the frustration that you all as residents, business owners, all of us share here on council is not in any way, shape, or form directed at you. You are all working around the clock, 24/7, 365, when storms and catastrophes like this happen, and the reason that you guys deserve to be in a union, to collectively bargain for good wages, good benefits, secure retirement, is because you're putting in this type of backbreaking work every time we get a storm. And boy, oh boy, does it seem like every time we get a storm, we get a rash of power outages here in Westland and across southeast Michigan. And I wanted to bring forward some statistics, some facts regarding DTE and the state of our power grid that they have left us all dealing with. There's a report from the Citizens Utility Board of Michigan, and they do these annual reports talking about grid reliability and cost. And in 2021, their most recent report, Michigan ranked 46th in the nation in terms of reliability, 46. There are states that have tornado alley, you're talking about the breadbasket of America, the Great Plains states, states along the coastal lines, Florida, the Carolinas, on up that deal with hurricanes, and we ranked below those states in terms of grid reliability. There are states here in the Midwest and states in the north that deal with winters, harsh winters, with ice storms and snow storms, just as we do, and they ranked ahead of us. We ranked 46th in the country in 2021 in grid reliability, and to boot, we paid the 14th highest cost for electricity here in Michigan. And this isn't because of northern Michigan or west Michigan, this is strictly because of southeast Michigan and the shape that DTE has left our grid in. Some numbers for you. In 2022, DTE made $1.8 billion in net income, that's profit. In 2021, they made $794 million. In 2020, they made $1.52 billion. In 2019, they made $1.167 billion. In 2018, they made $1.18 billion, and in 2017, they made $1.134 billion. That is after expenses and taxes paid, their net income, that's what DTE is walking away with. And when many residents were out during the ice storm for days at a time, some people on this council out for an entire week, and then subsequently out again after the snowstorm, and some people only just getting their power back on, what was DTE's response to all this? Why they generously, and I say generously in quotations, offered folks a $35 bill credit? For a company that had a net income of over $1 billion last year, they offered us a $35 bill credit. If you lost food and had to throw food out either the first time with the ice storm or the second time with the snowstorm, did you only throw out $35 worth of groceries? If you had to stay at a hotel, if you have a disability or a medical condition and you require medical equipment to be powered up to save your life, is that only $35 worth of equipment loss? How about if you, was that hotel bill that you paid, was that only $35? I don't think so. I think that DTE, and this is something I hope that our state legislatures work on, and I know that there's a bill up in Lansing to address just that, offer people, force DTE and consumers, any utility, to offer a credit for every hour of power you are out. I'm sure that that would change the game quite a bit with DTE. Want to talk about a few other things here real quick to close out my comments. DTE went to the Michigan Public Service Commission last year in 2022 to seek a 10% rate increase on all of us. It means they want to increase your electric bill. So while they're going to the Public Service Commission, increasing, looking to increase your electric bill, here's what DTE said in quarter four, this is, I have the transcript, this is from their quarter four earnings call in February, just about a week before the ice storm. And mind you, DTE has been going out in public and telling all of us through radio ads, through TV ads, through billboards, what they tell all of us here in the council, and what they tell you, the general public, that they're trimming more trees, they're working on upgrading our grid, the substations, the transformer lines, and they're investing more than ever in the grid. And that may be partially true, and we certainly know that we cannot blame DTE for what Mother Nature is doing. The wind, the rain, the ice, the snow, that is not DTE's fault, and nobody should be putting that blame on anybody at DTE, from CEO Jerry Norcia on down to the bottom. However, here's what DTE, publicly traded company, is telling their shareholders while they're telling you that they're investing more in the grid. Quote, "Since receiving the order on the rate case, we've enhanced our plan to address additional challenges, and we are implementing actions from our lean plan, including a number of one-time cost reductions that are not sustainable over the long term. These initiatives are all in areas where we have achieved success in the past during the start of the pandemic and during the last recession. These actions include delaying hiring, reducing our contractor workforce, deferring maintenance work in the short term, and limiting overtime accordingly. Through these actions, we remain confident that we will achieve our financial goals for the year without sacrificing safety, reliability, or customer service." And they had a whole slide and a whole presentation as well that you can see if you'd like to read through and go through their transcripts. So while they're selling to you, John Q. and Jane Q. public, that they are working hard and they're investing more money than ever in the grid, they're actually telling shareholders, because DTE is a publicly traded company, that they're actually looking at cost reductions, including deferred maintenance costs. And that study session that's coming up, that town hall with DTE, thank you to the administration, I know Councilwoman Sampe was talking to Congresswoman Talib about that, and I had a conversation today with our congresswoman as well. I think these are some important questions that we want to get full context from on DTE, to know what they're talking about when they're talking to shareholders versus what they're selling to the public. How much money they're actually going and putting into the grid in terms of tree trimming, substation, transformer upgrades, and when they're going to the Michigan Public Service Commission, asking for rate hikes on all of us. The final thing I wanted to talk about is it is easy for any one of us, including myself as an elected official, to complain, right? Anybody can complain, but do you have a solution to the problem? And I think that we do have a solution. There's legislative action that we know needs to be taken in Lansing, and I know that Representative Coleman spoke to that tonight, and I want to thank him for doing that, and I know that our other state representative, I talked to him over the weekend, Representative Wogella, is also committed to taking action. So we can do things like a bill credit for every hour you're out of power. We can do things like when DTE goes to the Public Service Commission, getting a better framework on what they're actually going to commit to as far as tree trimming and utility and grid upgrades. But the other thing that we can talk about is a public co-op, public utilities, where we, the people, have control over utilities. Now you may think that, well, public utilities, that sounds expensive or sounds radical, it's actually not. The city of Windout, downriver here in southeast Michigan, has their own public utility. Lansing has their own Board of Water and Light, they have their own public utility. In fact, across the United States, there are hundreds of public utilities, big and small. Now, what is a public utility? That means that we, the people, would control our electric grid, as opposed to a for-profit, shareholder-controlled entity like DTE controlling our grid, that would be under we, the people. And so Ann Arbor is exploring this very thing with the Ann Arbor for Public Power Initiative, I would encourage folks to check that out, I've had conversations with some of those people and conversations with other people that have more knowledge about public power than I do to try and educate myself. I will never promise that a public co-op, a public utility, will be a magic fix, because there is no magic fix. We can't fix the wind, the rain, the snow, the ice, we can't do that. But when you look at studies and rate cases out there, public utilities offer more reliability, and they offer a quicker turnaround time when the power goes out to restore power, and they oftentimes offer a cheaper rate for their customers. Take, for instance, the city of Windout and their public utility. They had fewer outages than what DTE had as a percentage of their total customer base in metro Detroit in the city of Windout, and within 24 hours, most folks in Windout were restored. Obviously, we know that the area that DTE has to work with is 100 times the size of the city of Windout. Lansing had the same ice storm that we did. In the city of Lansing, they got .44 inches of ice, we got a half of inch of ice estimated here in metro Detroit. However, in Lansing, where they have a public utility, they had far, far fewer outages than we had here in southeast Michigan and metro Detroit, where we had over 650,000 outages. So I would encourage everybody to show up at this town hall, I know my colleague's gonna talk more about the specific details of what, where, and when for next week, and I would encourage you to hold us all, hold every elected official accountable to do more on DTE, but come prepared with questions, because I know that you're frustrated and I know that you're angry as residents, as business owners, and you have every right to be. You have every right to be, because this continues and continues and continues, and when we come out ranking 46th in grid reliability while paying the 14th highest cost, I think questions have to be asked. So, you know, again, I've been long-winded here tonight, I thank you for bearing with me here, I thank the utility workers for all that they did, I thank our first responders for having to play babysitter. There were cases where we had firefighters out there for six hours or more, sitting by and guarding down power lines, because DTE could not even send somebody out there to get to the down wire. That means that we're taking our fire trucks out of service so that somebody can sit there by a wire for six, eight, 10 hours until DTE can send it out. And this outage map and folks that were calling in to report down wires, they were tying up the 911 emergency lines because DTE's online reporting process, their app on the mobile phone, and their 800 call-in number were all down during the height of the ice storm. And it's really frustrating, and it's really unacceptable, and again, we cannot blame DTE for the storm, and no one should, but we can blame them for the response, and we can also blame them for the lack of productivity in making the necessary upgrades to our grid. So, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be long-winded here tonight, I apologize to my colleagues and for the residents for going here for 15 minutes, but thank you, and this, something needs to be done about this. Nothing further.
From one long-winded person to another. All right, well, good evening, I hope everyone is doing well, welcome to March. I wanted to start this off on a positive note, my son celebrated his 16th birthday over the weekend, so I wanted to say happy birthday to Gavin, I don't really think he watches this meeting, but maybe I'll show him, so just wanted to publicly say happy birthday. I'll start by congratulating our students, Emily Delane, Monique Oliver, Naomi, sorry, Dugger. It's really great when you have these compassionate students, this probably is our favorite meeting, just the things that are youth, it gives us, I think, faith in them, so I really appreciate this meeting and recognizing of so. Thank you again for, parents for raising them right, right? We're putting out some good youth. I'd like to send prayers to the W- I'd like to send prayers to the WLND team, the family of Dave, Monik, very tragic. So again, I'd like to send some prayers. I know this has been mentioned about Disability Awareness Month, and thank you, Ray, for bringing this up, but as an autism sibling, this month is, is very important to me. We did recently tape a show on disabilities awareness. I had some pretty amazing guests here. We, we chatted about many different things, different challenges that people go through, and I really appreciated it. So it will be airing soon on WLND as well as YouTube. Chief Diversity Officer C. Pascal-Eze was one of my guests, a disabilities advocate, Ray Schuhots, so thank you, Ray, for just being so positive, as well as Rebecca Rogers. She was a licensed counselor from High Gira Health in Westland, so she joined the show as well. And I wanted to thank WLND for the taping. So Craig, Craig, and Kevin, thank you so much for allowing me to spread this awareness. It really is so important, and we have amazing team, so I really appreciate you guys, just for your being patient and being so prepared for that, for the show. I also wanted to recognize it's Women's History Month, so happy Women's History Month to my colleague on the dais, Council President Protam Andrew Rakowski, and the amazing women that work for our city, those in the audience as well, and those watching at home. I feel very blessed to be surrounded around amazing women every day who help shape me who I am. I also wanted to thank my colleagues for helping to pass the autism resolution and honoring autism awareness. As a sibling of, of a low-functioning brother who has autism, I brought this up previously, and I didn't realize that we actually had the resolution just for that year, so I was like, we have to do it again. So now it's a blanket resolution. So every April, the city of Westland will be recognizing Autism Awareness Month in April. I know that Councilman McDermott brought up so many great facts, so thank you for that and all the research and sharing everything that you shared. I think we all echo that as well. This is the second time in two weeks that our residents are, are left without power, and I am so sorry for those that dealt with that. Myself, I lost power. I had stories from residents, a single mom in Westland on the south side, and her pipes were frozen, and she had no money to feed her son. I, I mean, there's stories like this, seniors on oxygen. Councilwoman Rakowski many times lost power as well for upwards of a, a week, and it's not acceptable. DTE absolutely needs to do something about the failing infrastructure in Westland, everywhere, not just the north side, the north, south, east, west, everywhere. And it's absolutely disgusting that this keeps on happening. I've tried to talk to a few people in Lansing about this, and I haven't really gotten a lot of response. So I went up, and I went up to the federal level, saying, "Our residents deserve better. We all deserve better. Every single person who's watching, every single person in this room deserves better. We do not need to go through this." So what I've done is I've gone up to the federal government and said, "We need a town hall where our residents can come and express their concerns, express what this has done to their life, the inconvenience." So we do have a town hall planned for Monday, March 13th at 6:00 PM in the ballroom here at City Hall. It's in Ballroom A, which is right around the corner, and myself, Mayor Londo, who is supporting this effort as well, Council President Protam Andrew Rakowski, Councilman McDermott, I know you mentioned it, and I'm sure all my colleagues also support and will be there as well. And again, I, I just really hope that you'll come out and express your concerns and, and learn a little bit more about how we can advocate on our behalf and tell DTE it's time to do what they need to do, and enough is enough. So that's kind of what I'm going to talk about a little bit more. But I wanted to thank the administration. Your fluid communication has been unparalleled. You have been out, Mayor Londo. You have been working around the clock. I know you're emotionally drained as well. You've been working with our workers, our DPS workers. I felt so bad, because again, this is the second time, so I, I did, I delivered pizza, so thank you. That was nice for mentioning that, wasn't going to. But our police and fire, I dropped off cupcakes for police and fire, I need to drop something off, but they have been working around the clock, and it really has come to the point where now they're doing DTE job, DTE's job. I think it's been mentioned, but it's absolutely unacceptable that we're taking off our workers that need to be, I don't want to say workers, I'm sorry, but we're taking off our team to do DTE's job. So again, thank you very much. I see a few firefighters in the audience, police as well. Thank you for your patience, your tenacity for protecting our residents, and the DPS workers who worked around the clock. I wanted to congratulate Jennifer Thompson for your appointment tonight, and Bridget Gerard for your reappointment. I know this has been mentioned, but there's going to be a fun basketball game with the John Glenn basketball team and the Westland Police. They're going to be doing a 50-50 raffle and a three-point contest. It is on Saturday, March 18th at 2:00 PM, and I think the, Mayor Londo is going to be there. I'm sure my colleagues will join us. And this has been mentioned about study sessions, but we actually do have a few coming up, so I figured I'd mention this. On March 14th at 6:00 PM, we have a zoning ordinance update, and we also have another study, study session on March 20th. There's a council meeting, but the study session's going to be at 6:00, which is right before the council meeting, so we're going to kind of go, it's going to be a long night for us. So that's going to be on the CDBG Home Funds and their annual plan as well. So hopefully you can join us, anyone that's watching and in the audience. And then our next meeting will be the 20th, as I mentioned, at 7:00. Again, we do invite residents to come out to study sessions. We invite them to come out to our meetings. Until then, be safe, kind, and we'll see you very soon.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
I want to apologize in, in advance that mine's not going to be that long.
No, thank you.
You're welcome. So my prayers, condolences go out to WLND. You know, Dave was definitely a good man, so I echo what everyone says here. Mo, four years, congratulations, man. Appreciate working with you, appreciate everything you do for the city. I want to give all our responders, and you know, there was some rough work out there this last two weeks, so thank you, thank you, thank you for everything you guys do. I know some of the stuff is kind of petty, you know, everybody already beat up on DTE, so I'm not going to go there, but I appreciate you doing what you have to do to keep the city safe and keep things moving. To Jennifer and Bridget, congratulations on the appointment and reappointment. And also I want to thank the council members up here for approving the disability awareness. I think you definitely made Ray's day. He's going to be smiling for weeks to come. So thank you for that. I want to congratulate the gentleman that had the, I think it's called Hometown Pet, for, you know, sticking to a mission and actually achieving his goal. So I want to give kudos to him for that. And I think that's all I have. So thank you, everyone, for coming out. Appreciate the support and appreciate the comments and bringing the issues to the table. Thank you.
Protam Rakowski.
All right. Here we go. So I would like to start this evening by thanking our DPS workers, who I think in record time hit the ground running with this most recent storm. The response to get our, our streets cleared, and then, and turn around and get the debris clear, to make sure intersections were safe, it was commendable work, it's hard work, and it's just plain old labor, and we appreciate you. I don't have run numbers from the first storm or the second storm from PD, but I know that they were insanely busy. I do know that in the first storm, our firefighters responded to over 200 calls, and a lot of those were in relation to down wires or limbs that had caught fire because it hit a wire, and then you're worried about your garage or your home. I mean, the idea of going on 200 runs in, in one evening is just, it's crazy. So we appreciate you, and we appreciate everything that you do every day for all of us. I would like to thank Ms. Thompson for agreeing to be appointed to our planning commission, and I would like to thank Ms. Gerard for her reappointment to the very long-titled commission that she's on, but we're just going to call it the Economic Development Collective, because I think that's just easier for us today. Always proud of our, our children that are recognized monthly here. This evening, we celebrated middle schoolers who are caught being kind. So thank you, Emily, Monique, and Naomi, for being the wonderful humans that you are. And we got just a snippet of what you do to your school, for your school community and your classmates, and I, I just think you guys are amazing. Hometown Pets event was fantastic. I'm so proud of Derek and Hometown Pets and their partnership with Friends of the DACC. They had nine big, lovable dogs that needed homes. I had the pleasure of being invited and got to speak and, and do a little promotion for them, and we even had the mayor's sister adopt a beautiful puppy, and I think, am I correct, it got named Miley?
Grace.
Grace, oh, okay.
They didn't take my name.
They didn't take yours. Well, you know, you can't win them all. Thank you for recognizing Women's History Month. It's important for everyone, but you know, Women's History Month is just plain old history month. Everybody contributes in their own ways, and that's how we get here today. I have a lot to say about DTE, but we'll just wait on Monday for that. I was one of the lucky people who got, I guess I'm double lucky. I got both of the outages. The first one, I got 94 hours, so didn't even make the cut for the, right? I didn't get that credit. Son of a gun, I'm not going to get a dozen eggs and a gallon of milk, but you know, it, it's just ridiculous. I think if we took screenshots of all of the outages that we've experienced in the last few years, if we laid them on top of one another, they'd be the same areas over and over and over again, and it's just enough. You know, their website talks about how they're not responsible for acts of God. Well, you know, hardly any businesses, but what you are responsible for is maintaining and remediating and upgrading so that when these acts of God happen, we have reliable service. Seems pretty basic to me. I don't know about any of you, I don't make $11 million a year. And you know, I think there's some accountability that's being missed, certainly. $35 is insulting, and I just would like to know where I can send all my invoices.
We're covering it all.
Okay, sir, thank you. You know, I have a 97-year-old grandmother, it's my husband's grandmother. She's dependent on oxygen. You know, she's, she's one of very many in the community that, you know, the first time we were lucky, we could relocate her. This time, you know, we weren't in that situation, and you know, we've emptied the fridges and you eat out, and I love supporting the community, but I wanted to eat my food, you know? So when the second one came around, I was, I had a lot of trepidation, because I, I read the weather report, same weather report, I think DTE has the privilege of reading, and I knew there was another storm going, so I didn't even fill the freezer, because it was like, well, you know, what's going to happen? But I do have to thank Council President for running over with a generator, and one of our, our firefighters who was able to kind of help put a switch on my furnace. I don't understand it. I'm not an engineer, don't pretend to be one, but we were able to get heat. But it shouldn't come down to who your friends are, and it shouldn't come down to being fortunate, and it shouldn't even come down to being able to afford a whole home generator. We pay DTE bills. We have no choice but to pay DTE bills, and so I think at the very least that we can ask of them is for some reliable service. And then when these incidents, just like when we used to have our 100-year storms that seemed to be coming every year, when these incidents happen, don't insult us. Give me an actual idea of when you're going to repair service. I don't need a bottle of water from you. I need electricity, and I think you all feel the same way. So I'm looking forward, thank you for getting in contact with the Congresswoman. I would have, I don't even have cell service when I don't have power, so I'm still getting voicemails from residents. It's crazy. But I, I feel bad for you. Let's all work together as a community to let them hear us, right? I know the seven of us are advocates of it, but everybody needs to be at that table. Everybody needs to be demanding not the luxury of having electricity, the necessity of having electricity, but it should not be a luxury item, and it certainly is ridiculous. In the state of Michigan, we've had this sort of weather, even though it's a little bit different this year, but we've had hard winters forever. Fix your infrastructure. So with that, I'm sorry, I did go, I did talk about DTE, but I'm sorry. I, I don't think I outspoken Councilman McDermott, so I think he still has the record, but thanks. Hope you'll come Monday for that. I hope you will attend our study sessions. Thank you for being active and involved in our city. If you do have an event like Hometown Pets did, please reach out to WLND, especially on their Facebook page. It's probably one of the best ways to contact them. We love coming to your events. We love helping you with whatever we can. And I'm just going to close with, may Dave rest in peace, and may his memory be eternal. Good night.
So what do you say when your colleagues leave you with nothing to say?
Nothing.
Absolutely nothing. Just two things. Thank you, Councilman Hornbuckle, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, your first time, first of many, so thank you for that. And the water tower thing, so you brought the water tower thing up again. So nobody talked about the water tower, I'm going to talk about the water tower. So a, as you know, water towers, as we've, we've talked about this before in here, you know, it's exactly it. They fill at night. Our GLWA charges us a lower rate when there's at-night consumption, and during high-peak hours, they discharge, saving the consumer, the consumer, some money. The issue I have with it, and I will have with it until someone can prove to me that it won't be an issue, and I'm not saying I'm not going to, I'm against them. I have an issue. And the issue is our rates are set by GLWA. If at some point GLWA says, "We're going to flatten our consumption rate, regardless of what time you suck water down," I just built a $5 million liability, because then I'm not reaping any rewards or any savings off of it. And outside of the cost of a water tower, the annual cost is massive. You have FAA and lighting requirements you have to do, you have the standard water maintenance you have to have in a water tower that the city will have to absorb if it's our water tower. So yes, there's some great savings there, and under the current rate structure, there is, but until someone can prove to me that GLWA can't flatten their consumption rate, I, there's a, I have a big caution about it. So if that, someone can show that to me, bully, let's move ahead and get some information, all right? But if I build a $5 million water tower that's going to cost me $500,000 a year to maintain, and then two years from now, I don't care if you use water at 2:00 in the morning or 2:00 in the afternoon, boy, is that going to suck. So that's what I'm, that's my concern. And other communities that are building them, they are building them, they're kind of ahead a little bit. They did build them, they had the space to do it. So if we're looking at doing it and saving residents money, and if I can financially be confirmed to me that we won't have an issue, and I can make it financially work, I'm good with it. But until someone answers that one question for me, I'm really concerned. So I hope that answers it. I'm, I'm eager to hear more information, but that's one concern I have, because we don't charge, we, we don't control our water rates. That's set by the GLWA and against all the communities. So I hope that makes sense. Thank you, everybody, coming out. May the Lord hold and keep DTE, because they're in for it, it seems. So is there a motion to adjourn?